Monday, April first, twenty twenty four. Take over.
Florenceine?
Here.
Jonathan?
Here.
Keeper?
Peg Meyer?
Here.
West Meyer?
Here.
Rainan?
Renner?
Here. Yeah, Gorm, uh, next pleasure, Leach. Okay, tonight we have with us Mr. Mark Miranda, who will present the budget for this table, so I'll tell you where you part.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
So happy at the fool's day, everybody. This is the second time I remember having a budget work session on April first. Last time I told a really bad joke to start about how bad city finances were. I won't do that. As they're not fat shit. Uh, I want to start by thanking our staff, all our department heads, both of which are here tonight for all of their work helping prepare this budget. I think we forget how much work does go into it. All the expenses we have in here have to be estimated. They've already gone out and assembled a lot of those costs in advance, so appreciate all the work they've done. Judgement, our finance director, the help she's given me on this budget, all the data entry, which takes a lot of time, and then she's also performed a real critical review on the transmittal memo and helped prepare some new slides as well that I think are going to be nice. Presentation is very similar course to past years. I can say, say that every year, but I think there is some value in trying to be consistent for the sake of clarity of all of you, our staff, for the citizens, as well as being transparent, so that's what we're trying to achieve here is really clarity and transparency. So let's move along here. And I would also know you all receive the budget itself and the transmittal memo. And in that transmittal report, we do try to go to quite lengths to get a lot of information. We try to detail all the individual funds, so if you read through that, you'll have a good feel for each fund, what's going on in that fund this year and its financial condition. Our goal tonight, we want to just take a big kind of broad look at the budget. We won't delve down too deep, except in a few, few areas. And by the end of this session, you should understand the whole budget process, what we have coming after tonight. Understand all our major expenditures and planned projects, getting capital projects to be a big part of our budget up here. Understanding the condition of each fund and the overall financial condition of the city. And we might take the budget processing a little farther in some places because it is one time we get to get together during the year. So we want to try to cover as much as we can. And then of course make sure the budget's representative of what you want to achieve as the city council. And we can determine if we need another look session after tonight. This is the overall agenda for tonight, starting with the goals that we set for the, uh, the budget itself as we go into the budget process. Let's talk a little bit about our methodology, zero-based budgeting as we have in past years. Uh, our budget summary, this is the big picture, total revenues, total expenses, and how they vary from last year to current year. We'll look at our revenue assumptions, trying to give you a feel for power projecting revenues, so you can have hope for some confidence in the way we then propose to spend the money. Uh, projected fund balances, here we want to look at how our funds compare to our minimum fund balance policies, sort of our rainy day fund policy. Capital projects and expenses, again, a large part of our budget. And really this area determines our workflow for the next year, so I think we all want to be on the same page with these. The street improvement sales tax, I kind of have this, um, desire, I guess, to keep you and the public informed about this. This is the voter approved, five percent sales tax back improved back in two thousand and eight. So we want to give an update on that to show how we're spending that state tax revenue. Then review our debt and talk a little bit about staffing and post compensation for the coming year. Then certainly at the end, we talk about anything. Do you want to talk about my budget? Feel free and ask questions on the way or discuss as we go as well. So going into the budget, this is what the staff and I really set out to achieve. We want one hundred percent compliance with our minimum fund balance policy. I talk about that a lot, we'll talk about it a lot tonight. Uh, we want to balance your overall budgets, our expenses, do not exceed revenues. Uh, balance as many of our nineteen individual funds as possible. Generally think about it, it is possible to have a balanced budget, but still have individual funds that are not imbalanced. We want to avoid new debt unless it's obviously needed. We have that dedicated revenue stream to pay the service on it. Fully fund all our existing debt, pay down debt early if possible. You know, you say that as a goal, I will say, I don't think we've ever paid any debt. But if we see an opportunity to, actually we have, I shouldn't say that because we've done restructuring, uh, refinancings, but we have paid early and changed the terms. Uh, fully fund all contractual obligations. We do have some big contracts, um, US water, uh, Montgomery Trucking Contract, for instance. People have the capital improvement plan that the council approved back in December. Maintain or improve the level of services applied to our citizens. Of course, try to improve our energy efficiency and environmental, not only sustainable practices. So how does the proposed budget stand up to those goals? Well, all of our nineteen funds are expected to be in compliance with our funding balance policy at the end of this next fiscal year. I think that is the overriding positive message that I want to project. The general fund does have a proposed deficit of two hundred and eighteen thousand, and we'll talk a little bit about why that is later. And our overall budget has a deficit of four hundred and fourteen thousand, and then we'll get into that later. Fourteen of our nineteen funds are balanced or have a budgeted surplus. So that's great news for fourteen of those, and we'll talk about the other five as we go on tonight and what's going on in those funds. There's no new borrowing proposed, so that's nice and easy, and we are going to meet all of our contractual obligations. Not planning any reductions of public services. Just about all the capital improvement plan projects are funded in the budget. The ones that are not may be listed as we go on. All existing employee positions can be funded. We are proposing to, um, change our part-time post-doctoral officer and kind of planning assistant to a full-time position. So that was a physician, if you recall, like after COVID, we actually did move down one full-time position at City Hall. So this would be bringing us back up to full strength. The property tax, we talked about try not to raise taxes. We have back in December, the council voted to increase the actual amount of the levy by five percent. But in doing so, we still expect the actual rate to decrease. So for a property owner whose home value does not change, their assessment does not change. They expect the city's property tax to go down twenty-five dollars and seventy cents for a hundred thousand in value. And then outside the property tax, we're not proposing any new taxes or fee increases going forward, and good news there. All right, moving on to methodology. Then we try to follow the zero-based budgeting approach where we're really starting over every year, trying to critically look at all the individual expense line items. It's not taking it for granted that because something was in the budget in the current year that it should be in the next year. And I guess the real point here is that I always want to convey, we're not just saying, okay, three percent, cost of living was three percent this year, we're going to increase all of most of our line items, three percent. We are actually looking critically at all those items. And I don't know, I say it over here, I'm not sure this is the best way to measure it, but one way to look at is we have about five hundred and fifty expense line items in the budget. So this chart shows how many of those line items are increasing in the proposed budget, twenty-eight percent. How many are decreasing, eighteen percent, how many are staying the same, fifty-four percent. If you look at that over the last ten years, the average that are either decreasing or staying the same is seventy-two percent. We, that's happens to be where we are this year as well. So again, seventy-two percent of the line items in the expense budget are staying the same or decreasing. I think seeing it over time like that shows the consistency that we have in trying to be very honest and, you know, fair about our revenue or expense projections. All right, budget summary, and here now, looking at the big picture budget. So total revenues, thirteen point five billion, that's two and a half percent decrease in the current year. And total expenses increasing, sorry, thirteen point nine billion, it's six point four percent. It's a little bit hard to just look at the, the changes up or down from year to year because there's, you know, so much more budget, the price of capital projects, various expenditures both change year to year, can change pretty dramatically along with the revenues that go with them, whether it be grants or loans. So, um, overall, I guess it's nice to see expenses decreasing, but it's, you know, in one quick picture, it's really not a tell-all because there's so much more going on in the budget. Again, looking at the big picture, uh, the full budget has a deficit of four hundred and fourteen thousand. The general fund has a two hundred and eighteen thousand deficit that does include the transfers that are being made to the parks fund, the turn hall fund, pool, garbage fund this year, and we approve that of this liability fund. So those transfers are all being made from, again, general fund really our biggest and strongest fund to the funds that just can't generate enough revenue on their own to support themselves. And if this budget came to fruition as planned, all revenues received and expenses related, we ran the fiscal year with approximately nine point six million in basically in the bank and our fund balances, that's across all nineteen funds. All right, revenues and expenses by funds, again, all of this is in the, the budget transmittal report, and I know it's hard to read up there. So what I want to call your attention to here are like five funds that I mentioned earlier that are not in balance, who do not have a surplus, so these are all deficits. Uh, first of which is the general fund, two hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, in this case, what we're looking at is the fund balance for the year. So even with this deficit, I think we're still projecting a seventy-six percent carryover, so seventy-six percent of our annual expenses. You may recall, our goal is to have at least forty percent of the general fund reserved. So here with the deficit, we'll kind of weigh over our minimum required fund balance. Part of this deficit, two hundred and eighty thousand, is, uh, a transfer that's being made to the garbage fund this year. That transfer is over a hundred and thirty-two thousand. We signed a new contract with Montgomery, it was a considerable increase. So the garbage fund does not have the revenue to cover that. Typically, what you would do is raise rates to generate the revenue to cover the increased costs. What we're proposing to do with this budget is to make a transfer again from the strong general fund to the garbage fund that will allow us to not have to raise customer rates at all. And looking back, we haven't raised those driving recycling rates since two thousand eleven or two thousand fourteen. It's been a long time. So we're trying to keep with that trend, keep it down for the residents. But again, that's part of the reason we're spending into that deficit in the general fund. The next one there, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred, that is in the liability fund, so that's the fund we use to pay all of our insurance expenses. There again, we just built up a fund balance that's larger than it needs to be. So just spending that down, not transferring other funds into there to try to balance that budget. Going down to the next blue one there, forty-two thousand one fifty is a deficit in the parking and shuttle fund. That one is primarily entirely because of our large project at four oh three South Main, the restroom remodeling project. We had a hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted out of parking and shuttle to go toward that project. Uh, again, parking shuttle has a strong fund balance, so even though looking at a deficit from this year, we're still meeting our minimum fund balance on the parking and shuttle. And then the debt service fund, debt service is really intended to have a zero balance at the end of every year. It, it doesn't have any revenue ever, other than the transfers into it from the funds that have to pay debt. It's just the, the vehicle for paying the debt. So there's been a carryover from the past year, which was just an over-budgeting in one of those years. So we're just looking to spend that down and get it back to zero at year end. Yeah.
I was curious, what, what fund did the purchase of four oh three come from?
Four oh three came from the general fund. Just, yeah. Two hundred thousand. The last one here, the two hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred, that is a deficit in the water fund that would normally be pretty alarming to see that big of a number in the red. The reason it is is because of our water tower painting project. So in this current fiscal year, we had a borrowing in anticipation of the water tower project, so we received four hundred and forty thousand of loan revenue again in the current year. So we can only show that revenue once, and now that we're moving into the next year, we're going to have the expense without the revenue. So basically, this two sixty-three is the water tower, almost identical to the cost of water tower painting. So we're just spending revenue that we've already received. Otherwise, again, that fund would be basically balanced for the year.
So you count a loan as revenue?
Yeah. Yeah, that's revenue. And then, you know, the loan payments, you share in expenses. So again, I I think this is a good slide just to show you why we have that fund deficit of the four hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh, there is a good reason for all of it. So you know, the general fund, if it had to be balanced, could we do it? Yeah, we could do it. Um, and when we get into our capital projects and purchases later in the presentation, that's probably the, the place where money could be cut from the budget. All right, revenue assumptions, as I mentioned earlier, we just want to be clear about how we're forecasting revenues. Make sure we're confident in our expenditures. Uh, generally, we're trying to be very fiscally conservative, not to be confused with politically conservative, fiscally conservative. Sales tax, we, is our largest revenue of all, it's one point seven million. We're just projecting a five percent decrease, again, nothing indicated that we're going to have a big downturn, but we just want to be cautious. Income tax is a revenue that's shared to us with, by the state of Illinois. And all the state shared revenues are in Illinois Municipal League. They do a pretty extensive and thorough job of estimating those revenues for the next year. So wherever IML provides an estimate, we use that estimate. So with income tax, they are projecting a ten percent increase. And they're, like I said, they're really, uh, we spend a lot of time and energy with their, their projections. Property tax, we talked about that earlier, it's a five percent increase will go off, that's already been proved. Building permits showing a huge decrease, sixty percent. This is entirely because of the hospital projects, which we budgeted for in the current year and will not have in the coming year. We've got, uh, we've had a really a great year in building permit revenue, getting outside of the hospital. And we still have, like, we'll likely have tractor supply, building permit hitting in the current fiscal year. But there's potential it could be this next fiscal year. Food and beverage tax, again, keeping with the conservative trend here, showing negative five percent, same with amusement tax and the video gaming. Uh, we're not, again, our, those aren't really trending that way, and that, those bigger models, but this being conservative. Motor fuel tax is another one estimated by the Illinois Municipal League, so looking at a three percent increase. That one is, uh, a per capita, so based on our population. Cannabis excise tax, this one here actually includes, there's a very small state shared revenue cannabis tax. So they share with us, it's very small. The next, that's mixed in with our three percent excise tax, the city council approved on gross sales of cannabis in the league. And, and kind of mix them the two, or just put it at four percent. I guess, I will say, we've seen just a very slight decline in cannabis over the last little sense of that first year, but, um, nothing, nothing great. Water and sewer use fees, here, uh, we're not proposing any fee increases, as I mentioned earlier. And we know these revenues to be very stable, so, um, we're just keeping them stable because we don't want to, we just want to be as realistic as, as possible because these water and sewer have so many expense needs and we're just trying to balance, again, not raising rates, but we want to do as much as we can at the same time. So we feel pretty confident and, um, holding that flat. Turner hall use fees, this figure, big decrease, we see twenty percent. This is based just off of kind of reservations we have going forward into the next year. That could change, uh, much more positively going forward, but again, it's based on what we know so far. And then again, this being conservative, the pool, that one is, you know, it's fairly consistent year to year, so no big concerns there. That's the revenue. Um, one of our new charts links to Jen, looking at revenues split across all funds, so including the general fund, our nineteen funds. Just gives you an idea of how it's split out, so the biggest section here, intergovernmental, governmental taxes. So this would be the sales tax, those other state shared revenues I was just talking about, like income tax, local use tax, motor fuel tax, all of that in that forty-two percent, five point six million. Then charges for services, there we're getting into our water sewer, garbage use fees. Property taxes, one point six million. Probably means twelve percent of our total budget. I think this is an important slide for citizens, council members, for all of us to remember. I think there's a misconception that community property taxes are, city community taxes are such a big part of our budget. They, they're really, um, um, not that big, not insignificant, but not that big.
Do you know if that's an average, I'm sorry, do you know if that's a, like, what an average percentage is just for, just for a city, it would be interesting.
Yeah.
I'll find out, I've got my cell phone work, just to, I mean, it would just be interesting to know.
Yeah. Uh, there's grant revenue this year, just a single grant with the, that's sort of the slide project. That's actually a two point seven million dollar grant, but we are expecting to have spent one point two million of it in the current year, so this is what we're maybe coming here. Transfers in, so we treat transfers as expenses as they're, uh, going out and revenues are coming in. So there is a lot of money moving between funds. The, the all others, just everything else, you know, a little bit of everything in our budget, turning that view.
Could you remind me, is, is the, is the hotel tax, we didn't see that up there because that goes direct to, to the, is it glenna or that's part of, that's in the intergovernmental, but then?
It's a tax received, so we do budget it as revenue. So a hundred percent of what's collected is revenue. And then we expense ninety-two percent of it to a country tourism. So our, our little net on that is just the eight percent. But it is, it does show up as revenue and then the expense to the whole country.
So where, where is it here is where I got confused, like where is it in the, in the, um?
In the actual budget. Sorry, it's a little bit. Yes, we can share it there.
Okay, right at the top of it.
Right.
Thank you.
That's what I've shown on the first tagmires, the general fund revenue, the first page of the actual budget. Hotel tax is shown as a revenue. And the cannabis tax, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, interesting to see how that's broken out. As I mentioned earlier, we have three percent local excise tax, so that's the maximum that the city can charge. That's on gross sales. Then there's the one percent, which is the statewide municipal sales tax. Everybody every city has, that goes into our general fund. And we have a half percent sales tax that was the voter approved for streets. So that goes into the capital projects fund, and then the half percent voter approved tax for a sewer fund to pay the debt on the wastewater plant. So yeah, those are, try to look for, try to figure out the cannabis revenue, which you still can't disclose publicly because there's only one light business in town. Uh, you can't give away those sales. It's, it's, really you can't figure it out. You can see that in the budget, you can see the three percent excise tax, but it's mixed in with the other state excise tax. And then those other three, the one percent, the two half percents are mixed in with all the other sales tax that goes in those three areas, so. I'm sorry. All right, projected fund balances, here again, our minimum fund balance policy. Uh, generally, the policy is we want to maintain thirty percent of annual operating expenses for each fund, to our nineteen funds in reserve, so in the bank. What I've highlighted here are the funds that are something different than thirty percent, starting with the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, it's forty percent. And then our parks fund, turner hall and swimming pool, there again, we're just trying to break even at the end of the year. Capital projects fund, which is that half percent sales tax for streets. Trying to maintain balance of fifty thousand at year end, just to give us a little bit of flexibility. Uh, when those annual street paving bids come in, we usually have a little bit of adjustment to deal with the budget, so it's nice to have that little reserve at least. And then the benefits liability fund, that one has a very specific, uh, policy statement about how much has to be reserved. And that's, again, just as a reminder, it's a fund that's set up to pay for the, uh, the compensation of benefits when somebody leaves the service of a city employee, paying out their vacation leave and their, included sick leave that they're due. It sets aside a portion of the total liability for all the doors. And I will say on the benefits liability fund, this year, it is fully funded. Most years we have to add a little bit to that, and it's a transfer from the general fund. This year it is fully funded, so there is no revenue need for that fund. All right, projected year-on fund balances, and probably one of the more important slides, looking at the current year, sort of on the left. Projected fund balance year-end, how it compares to our minimum fund balance policy, although that percent of annual expenses in reserve and then isn't compliant with our policy, as you know. So we expect all nineteen funds to be compliant at the end of this year. Looking in the far right there, in the coming year, again, we expect every one of the funds to be compliant. So again, taking back to those five funds that have proposed deficits for just the coming budget year, even though they have those deficits, they're still operating, you know, going up our minimum fund balance policy. There you can see general fund as an example, expect it to end the, um, I should use my pointer here instead of expect to end the coming fiscal year with seventy-seven percent of its annual operating expenses in reserve. Uh, one of the other ones, and we just talked about earlier, liability fund, that's one where we're spending into a deficit this year, but it'll still have forty-eight percent reserve. Um, and one was the shuttle fund. There again, you know, two hundred percent in reserve, because that fund in the normal year just has all the, you know, expenses. Uh, and the other one was, yeah, debt service fund, where again, we just wanted that fund to break even at the end of the year, did not carry over any balance. And then the final one was the water fund. And then the final one was the water fund, where I was talking about receiving that loan money in the current year. So even if that proposed one year deficit, it's still gonna have the year with over half million in reserve, which is forty-four percent of annual operating expenses. And then again, as we mentioned, finishing the year around nine point six million. And I think that last slide just walks into uh our concept of efficiency sustainability, really showing that we're still on track. So we're just gonna keep talking about every year what it means to us, decision making for long term security of public funds. This is it, we're the ones entrusted, watching out for this money, and you know, we all take it very seriously. Spending within our means, which is what I think we're doing here, and then borrowing only when we needed and have that. That revenue stream to repay it, and again, we don't have any proposed new debt this year. And our our bond rating, we haven't been re-rated since two thousand twenty because we haven't issued any new bonded debt. But we're still maintaining that double A. Stayed well, which is very good. Capital projects and expenses. Uh, again, hard to read, it's a lot of small print here. I hate to do it to everybody, but I think it's worth reading through all these because this is really the heart of the budget and, like I said, really the kind of work plan for the next year. So here we go.
You're gonna tie it tight yourself?
Uh, no. Just tell me to stop. So, starting in the general fund, with the covers of plan update. Next, or this month, in our April, we will be coming to the council with a recommendation for a consultant. We've had two proposals, two good proposals, we budgeted ninety thousand last year, thought it might be a little more. So put a hundred thousand in, but both proposals are just under ninety, so we will be a little bit over with this, which is good. The uh city hall maintenance, this is twelve thousand dollars to do some work on that side of the building. That was a side we really didn't do anything with when we did the remodel, we're having some uh moisture issues, more windows on that side. And uh, really getting some penetration, so just wanna get that fixed. Four oh three South Main Street, we've talked about this already, this is the remodel, turning the whole bank into public restrooms. One hundred and fifty thousand in the general fund, and then that other one twenty-five in the parking shuttle fund, a total of two seventy-five. Not sure if this is going to be enough, too much, we won't really know until we get this project bid. Then we'll um make relative adjustments, we have to at that point, whether it's cutting things from the project or adding more money to the budget. Or coming in under budget, hopefully. The uh APX radio system, this is the countywide radio system that the studios county is starting to be running in the sheriff's department. The good news is, here last year, we had about a hundred and fifty or so thousand budgeted. Uh, Chef Kevin Turner worked with, um. Oh, who? Where's his first name? Darren. Darren, I always wanna say great, Darren. And he has found eighty thousand or eighty percent grant for this project or appropriation, so. Thirty-five thousand represents our twenty percent share. The community service, or community surveillance cameras, this would be standing our public surveillance cameras. Uh, twenty-five thousand there, the idea would be adding some of that main street, of green street. Back here at this intersection of water and commerce, or the water and uh green, but trying to get some coverage on the green street plaza. As well as the parking lot next door here, um, view cameras in recreation park. And one, or some up there in Hill Street and Franklin, we're gonna start getting into the school zone. A little bit more, so right at the top of Franklin, that hill, so twenty-five thousand for those cameras. Next one there is body cameras and in squad cameras, and forty-two thousand, usually the purchase is already approved by the council, they're actually already in use now. The uh vendor allowed us to wait until the new fiscal year to pay for those. Um, maintenance projects, this is just a general item in the public works budget, for some catch faces, repairs or replacements. Uh, various curb and gutter improvements and some extension wall work on public property. Matt does have some more detail on that, but that's just kind of a variety of miscellaneous projects. Sidewalk replacement in our residential districts, under fifty thousand, we would like to try to complete the cobblestone sidewalk. That would connect cobblestone to the highway twenty sidewalk. We hope to do that in this current fiscal year. But we did have to acquire an easement, we had that easement confirmed by survey and described now, so we should be in position to obtain that. And construct the project. Uh, new one truck, one ton truck with pound spreader to the public works department, this was approved by the council already also, because of the order period, so seventy-eight thousand for that. Uh, new trailer to the public works department here, we're trying to get like our skin loader and mini excavators on the trailer. To the work sites like water main break, so not going overload, uh, trying to improve safety and efficiency there. The equipment replacement, this is all skin loaded equipment, brush hog, broom, auger for drum poles. A tooth bucket for grabbing lifting, like uh logs for the middle truck. And a plate compactor, which is used to compact the gravel, like the base when we have a water main break. Try to make sure we get that as compact as possible, so the eventual repair of the black town doesn't settle. Commerce Street parking lot, stop leaving charges, this was on the last city council meeting, that should also be Reacher Street parking lot. And then, depending on how far it goes, possibly the uh four oh three South Main as well. The old firehouse on the on-site improvements, this is uh engineering work, this is front of the old firehouse with the brick driveway there. Some stormwater improvements there around the back of the property. And some possible work on the stairway, the concrete stairs that were between firehouse and church. So again, this year is trying to get the design completed, and the Gleaner Foundation has expressed interest in partnering with us on the. The actual construction of this project, and they usually do a fifty percent grant for those. The stormwater project, this is uh, they're actually three of your industry. The anticipation of painting there next year, trying to improve some runoff issues for residents, White Street. There we've had kind of a sinkhole situation with the retaining wall that's had some issues, we wanna get that repaired. And then Fulton Street is actually a project that's been on the books for probably twenty years at least, maybe more. Was recommended in the whole Franklin Street watershed study, that was done many, many years ago. So this is the valley, kind of behind the homes, between Foley and Campbell Street. Anyway, you try to know who that is, I could name residents there, but it's just a valley where we wanna put some check names in, excuse me, and. Slow the water down, that water eventually gets on Franklin Street and, I know Pam at least has all this.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna die one day, I, it was not fun.
Yeah, we're trying to, that comes out on Brick Street, yeah, yeah, trying to manage the water upstream, that was just showing. Uh, where am I at, High Street retaining wall, uh, yeah, that's up there in front of the Hellman House, guest house on High Street. This is that joint project with the cop and the owner, he paid for part of that already, twenty-seven thousand is the remaining work, and. We're just getting ready to start that work, which is up on the top, the pavement, putting in a new storm sewer and building out. Madison Street steps, here again, we're kind of looking forward, trying to start the engineering this year. To do a floor replacement of the steps that go up to the old jail, or the old school, it's already on the east side. The stairs that are still there, and have been closed for.
Years.
Decades, probably. But again, um, no one would really need to have a professional design on that upfront, so getting that started, and again, potentially another Gleaner Foundation partnership down the road. The fencing, this is the split rail fence going out to the rec park on Field Street. Starting to deteriorate pretty badly, so we wanna make sure that's in place because it's a steep drop off there next to that. Sixteen thousand dollars. Water fuel tax, uh, it's in there every year, gross solve, it's a big guy, over fifty-five thousand, there's about a twenty thousand in the general fund. We are doing what we can to minimize the use, we definitely do throttle our spreaders, but. We do use it, and it's uh, fortunately or unfortunately, it's such a hilly town that. We do, we do need. The parks fund, equipment maintenance, you know, rec park, we've already made a pretty substantial investment in maintaining the big playground there, which is now twenty year old. Believe it or not, but we're looking at another fifty-eight thousand, replacing a lot of the back end decking from that unit. And then also including that, that's all seventy-seven thousand on line items, some balch, and other miscellaneous parking party line items. And then rec park maintenance, fountain restoration, not a full scale restoration, but just uh. Surfacing of that, repairing the surface, repainting. Unfortunately, that's gonna be an ongoing budget item, maybe five years or so. Park improvements here, uh, public works, we'd like to try to start regroofing the pavilions in rec parks, we put some. Material costs in here, potentially some labor if we can't get to as much as we'd like to, but yeah, those pavilions, all but one. Are getting to that twenty year mark coming group, so we'll start replacing those. And then we have an ongoing program of um placing the mowers every three to four years, those big riding mowers, so that's the sixteen thousand. Flood gates on the flood control fund, seeing some rust again at the bottom of the flood gates, again, this is just ongoing maintenance. And it takes some, some sand blasting and some big pain in there, and then pump station rehab, this is the pump station behind city hall. Uh, right here, the big one, that has a big, basically a pin in it with pump, that's, as Matt tells me, aluminum paint, probably the original. That is really plaking and chipping, so we're gonna take that all down to bare metal and get that repaid and maintained. And then part of that might, a fifty thousand may go to some maintenance work on the pump on Riverside Drive. That isn't obvious, but it's right there. It says you come off the bridge on Riverside Drive underground. Moving into the fire department, fire department is looking at potential addition, it's remodeling. Addition being above sort of the north garage bays, which is, right now, there's nothing there, just a roof. Uh, so giving them some more space. New restrooms up there, I don't know if anyone's been in the fire department to be in their restrooms, but uh. At least the man's, is one of the smallest restrooms in North America. So it's restroom, some office space, more storage, trying to bring that facility up to contemporary standards. The, so this year we're looking at design for that, seventy-five thousand, just an estimate. Then we'll see where we go from there. Equipment replacement, this is the first tools, using the hydraulic tools, using vehicle edifications. And then just ongoing maintenance improvements out of the training center in industrial park. And the capital projects fund, uh, sales tax, and this is an extra sales tax, so if you had a street paving program. There's six hundred and twenty-seven thousand there, makes about five fifty of that, you'll actually need to allocate toward paving. We also wanna get a new water made in on Hill Street, in anticipation paving, that's the stretch between, actually right next to the Hellman House. High and Prospect, it's a real.
It's rough now.
Tough, it's just a place to worry, it's a rough street, so we wanna, but we wanna do the utilities before we do that street. So you'll see later, there's some sewer money in there also for that section. And then um Indian Ridge, here we, we did paving last year there, but. Created some kind of rough transitions between the road and the driveways, because you ground, ground down first, so. Trying to go back and put some new aprons on those driveways to, in concrete, to give those residents the transitions they should, should have.
Right.
And then Hickory Street, so they're, depending on, I talked about this earlier, but some stormwater work on Hickory Street. We may be drawing two different line items here to make sure we get that done. Um, so there's definitely a need there, some of the residents having problems with stormwater. And then another twenty-five thousand in that fund for crack billing, there again, we're just trying to keep that maintenance, trying to. Keep the water from penetrating, getting into the subsurface. And in the water fund, meter upgrades, we talked a little bit about this in our last council meetings, we'll generally try to do about twenty thousand a year. You know, this year we will be looking at really studying a wholesale meter replacement program throughout the community. So I think this twenty thousand probably go more toward uh meters that have already failed, but we just need to replace them. And uh those large users that we're trying to get better handle on how the meters are working or not working. Now, lead service line replacement, and we think we'll have about a million and a half left to spend of our two point seven million dollars. And you know, we're wrapping that project up, I think, July or August, and then hopefully working for the second grant to finish the entire community. And valve replacement is something we try to budget every year, just to make sure all of our valves are working, when we have to have emergency shut offs and. Not having to shut off huge areas of the town because we have a stuck valve. So that's just ongoing maintenance, and then a little bit of contingency there, twenty thousand would be. Right, we'll guarantee you we will spend at some point, the water fund. Sewer fund, new truck, seventy-five thousand, unfortunately, that's just, they're so expensive today, that would be with toolbox as well. In the back, and then we're looking for an ATV, like a little, a full wheel vehicle, sort of a. Uh, kind of a proprietary storage unit on the back that would house our. Very expensive sewer, storing sewer camera system, we're just trying to be able to, with this vehicle, having the camera mounted, access. Anywhere we need to with that, that sewer camera, because it's extremely helpful and can resolve a lot of issues before you get much older to supervise residents.
Are we using that now, Mark?
We are, yeah, yeah, but you know, part of the issue is, it just needs to be, the easier we can access it. And this would actually get to the point where we have the computer right there with it, so everything can be together, the way it is now, it's on the back of pickup, and it's just hard, yeah. It's not always there, we have to put it there, and it's just hard to access. Waste point treatment plan, uh, here we have nineteen seventy-something sledge truck, and it is at the end of its life. So we're looking to replace that with just a sledge spreader, be like a viewer's spreader, you see how far, sixteen thousand for that. And you will continue to land apply her sludge. In different farms throughout the area. And then the sewer extension, this is Spring Street, so this is what went underneath the highway. Near that old uh Amoco, up by the uh Center for Arts, and then we have twenty thousand five hundred budgeted. That we have committed to, to pay for the materials for the pipe going up to the old body shop, despite that payment situation. And then that's Paige. So the park and shuttle fund, we already talked about that, we're twenty-five thousand for the rescue project. Turner Hall, this is actually a pretty pricey year for Turner Hall, and if you think back to our, after sitting in the general fund. There is a transfer of, I think, two hundred and. Twenty thousand, two hundred and one thousand from general fund to Turner Hall, help fund the HVAC replacement, which is. Two hundred and forty-ish thousand, I think, plus we're anticipating another sixty at least of mason linework on the front of the building. As we're seeing a, a water issue on the top left of the building, so we have bids out for that right now, make sure we take care of that. Uh, pool, number of projects there, council did approve that gray replacement project. That's one of them, helped you complete the epoxy flooring in the, the actual bath house this year. We're replacing the furnace that was, as you recall, we re-roofed the building last year and moved the, the uh. Condenser from the roof, realized it was ready to be replaced, so now we're putting the new one in, that ground oven. And then have a, give them out of the budget in there for some new shade structures. And then have a, give them out of the budget in there for some new shade structures out on the deck. Yeah, for those that want shade at the pool. So that'll be a really nice improvement. So total capital projects, four point four million. And after that lead service line grant, our net cost is two point nine zero. All right, we did it. I did mention those are the projects that were in the capital improvement plan, but not in this proposed budget. Starting with uh, the approach structure on the street pedestrian bridge, we know we have to do that project. It's currently being braced, you know, we had that engineered, so that bracing is still in place. I'm hoping we'll do this next year, but just all things considered with our work planned for the year. Um, we just don't think we'll be able to get this done. Police squad purchase, give it to our chief of police, he voluntarily said we can forego the squad this year. We get these body cameras and stick squad cameras, so. He's getting those and um, he's willing to forego the new police car. So that's, that was his suggestion. Technical drive, shut lane, technical drive especially is in really bad shape, a lot of it in the paving. So we're letting you do that, because that's not a residential street, we're not able to do that out of the sales tax, capital projects fund. So that one we've got to make cut this year. Here Street Water Main Replacement, we're still not really ready to commit to that project yet, still doing no study on. The extent of what needs to be done there, that's up, again, near the Center for the Arts. And wastewater plant, third, this is something that needs to happen, those are those two big goals down there. Lot of apparatus in each of them, but US Water is going to try to accomplish a lot of that work with their own staff, so then. See if they can get done this year, evaluate this for next year.
Uh, Mark, is the um, Pure Street um, project, is that tied in with what the state is doing?
No, no, this is uh, when we took the old water tower offline. Made all those pressure adjustments, we were having issues up there with water main breaks. The way we have things um, wrong right now, it's. It's holding, but we know there are some issues with that pipe.
Yeah. Naturally.
Yeah. Okay. Again, another one of our new slides, similar to the revenues, this represents all expenditures across all nineteen funds. You can see the capital improvements, biggest portion at thirty-one percent, we're putting a million. And I think you could, as you go across there, repairs and maintenance, a lot of those expenditures could easily kind of cross into capital improvements, the way we talk about them. The second biggest expense, personnel, thirty-two percent. And I, I, I think there's a lot of, I think a lot of smaller municipalities, you're gonna see personnel being the biggest expense probably. But uh, fortunately, we have such good revenue streams, and are able to do so much more in that capital project arena. Transfers out, as I mentioned, we show transfers as revenue and expenses, so this is the expense side of them. Direct cost of services, here we're looking at, like the US Water contract, look at the trucking contract. And uh, of course debt payments, eight percent, one point one million, and then the all others. We kept on. Okay. Street permit sales tax, which we talked about, I just like to cover this each year because. They, you know, the waters take, take it on, they approve a, a sales tax, a referendum for us to do something. We should do something, and we should tell them what we, we did, so this started in two thousand eight, when they passed the, the sales tax. And it's just a running list of streets that have been approved with that water improved sales tax, so a total of six point five million. And it's really accelerating now, in its first three years, when we did the failure street, there we, and Jackson, there we had. Uh, especially with the failure in Jackson, we had a lot of underground utility work as well. So the money went fast, we borrowed in those first three years, each of those years. Had to pay that off over uh, ten years in each case, so. Now, as you know, we've gotten to the point where we have no debt in this fund, and we are able to finally. Achieve quite a bit in any given year. And this is just a list again from the capital improvement plan of the streets that we proposed paved this year. And I have the total here, it's six hundred and twenty thousand. But because of some of that other work I mentioned earlier, that's been chopped down to about five and a half, so we'll see. We have enough to do them all, again, that depends on where the bids come in, but we will evaluate that, and there's no moves on the thought of us. On the map, again, which is in the capital improvement plan. All the white streets there represent what's been accomplished since that water improved sales tax took place. And the dark green, or dark blue, I'm sorry, shows what we hope to accomplish this summer. You can just go down the line over those following four years. By the end of that time, if we can stay on track, we'll have just about everything done. At least once since two thousand eight. Something areas.
I was gonna say, is, and this will be like on our website, or just somewhere easily, we can. Point to people to say, hey, you know, click on this tab or whatever, so you can see. Where your street is, is happening.
Yeah, and it's, it's on there now, and maybe if we get closer to the pavement project, we can play the map on separately. But it's on there as a, the whole capital improvement plan is part of that. But yeah, we could do that, there's more, there's some.
Yeah, I think it's good even like with what's been done or what's coming up, like for people to be able to see, like, it's, it's happening, because of course everyone's. Most concerned about their.
Yeah.
Their own neighborhood and their own street, and if they can see, okay.
Oh yeah.
I'm coming up in October, you know.
Loes is no, loes is no lead lines in the street, we won't do in the street till the lead line's around, so that might throw some people off a little bit, but.
Right.
Hopefully we'll be done with uh, with getting a share.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's what we were thinking as we planned this, of course, is trying to pave. As like line replacements. And I think that point you just made there is important, and I've said this in past years, that. I think it is easy to forget what we've done, it's, and it's always obvious when there's a problem, but once it's done, it's forgotten how bad it was.
Right, right.
And I think this slide, and that one of those last slides, is just a good reminder. So this is just looking, again, this coming this year, to those, over the next five. At how much we are at this point planning to put into street improvement programs, it's just over a few million total. I think that'll increase, it's just we haven't planned out. With as much detail in those last three years as we have first couple. So as you look forward, we expect to have this current year in that capital projects fund with a balance of a hundred and six thousand. So again, thinking back earlier, to our minimum fund balance policy, we want to be right around fifty thousand. So should, you know, we do have some room to play with here, once we get the bids in, if we want to try to stay on schedule with the street paving. We may be able to get through some of this, that would be your decision.
And I, I know I've, I've talked to you about this before, but I'm curious. Like, there's so much infrastructure grant money in state, like. Is there, is there an ongoing way to try to get? More help for our city roads from the state and from the federal grant money that's, that's, that's out there right now? Just to like help, you know, or is it, is it, is the problem more that we don't have the personnel to do the? Applying for the grants, or like, where are we at with that?
There, we are always looking at those grants.
Right, right.
A lot of factors that come into play, sometimes. You know, if you don't have a project plan to the design, grade, build level, it's, it's hard to be competitive. So like Frank and Shire, for instance, we're trying to get that design fully up there, it's just a big project, you know, the high school and sewer and water. Um, I think that could be a potential grant project. Because, you know, the other thing is, if it's too small, a lot of times the grant agencies don't want to deal with it, so there's like, there's always that sweet spot.
Excellent.
There's also. Um, more than ever, at the state and federal level. Um, you know, income. Income standards for the community, so they're gonna be weighted more toward low-income communities.
Right.
There are a lot of factors that sometimes, I mean, I would give a grant, take that much great, but then as I go through the criteria, like. It's just not even worth our time, because twenty-five percent of the points are, are a community that we are not, we can't even qualify.
Right.
I mean, we can apply, but we're not, because of income, we're not going to just sit on the board.
Uh, so uh, just as an example, the grant we were trying to get for the splash pad. Um, I thought there was just a problem with the way we wrote the grant, that we didn't receive it, and is that something that we can get somebody to help us?
Well, on the splash pad grant, we're actually still trying to get response from the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay.
Who is kind of un-legal to respond to us, something in our grant writer. Just to try to figure out what the deficiency was.
Right, that's an ill site.
Yeah, so we're still looking at that, we're talking regularly about it. But on the other hand, you know, I think we have to remember, if we went back three, four years, we have received a lot of grant fund, we have.
Sure.
The East Side Projects was a huge one, Water System Project, the West Side Project was next, these were hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Moving into the lead service line, two point seven million, so it's, it's not that we're not.
Oh, yeah, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that at all, I'm just wondering, yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, again, we applied the E V charging grant with Black Hawk Hills, the regional grant, and we're unsuccessful. Which, and I mean, it's frustrating, because that was, I thought, a really good grant application, really well-written and conceived. And we're still trying to figure out on that one what the efficiency was. And the other side of it is, it's super competitive, everybody's thinking like you are, we are. Super competitive, you know.
You gotta slip an extra fifty on the application. Fifty, fifty-one.
All right. Talked a little bit about debt. So sewer treatment plan, it's obviously still our biggest piece of debt, sixty-one percent. That one will finally be paid out in two thousand thirty-four, we're still ten years out on it. Hope we only have to build a new street event before that.
Yeah.
And we will not. Then uh, most of our debt again, is in the enterprise fund, just water's doing, so you can see there, the West Side Project, eleven percent. Even though we, we received a big grant on that one, we still had a share of that, same with East Side Project. I think thousand nine percent of them, total debt. The well number seven, water tower up there, well. Four percent, that's from two thousand seven, so that was actually construction with water tower and eating well there. Getting close, we had two and a half million years service on that one, that'll be paid off. Then the total coating, that, that loan that I was talking about, that we were seeing in the current this year, four hundred and forty-ish thousand. And then the only general fund debt, or not enterprise fund debt we have. Is the Public Works Dump Truck, which is a five-year loan, one point nine five percent. We're, you know, this year and one more year on that, and then the dump sidewalk grant. That was just this last year, eight hundred plus thousand, and that is a five-year term, just seventy-four percent, so. The terms on those are short and good interest rates. They've been moved through, through those relatively quickly, so total. Uh, principal, eight million, principal and interest, nine point two million. Looking at this year, we'll be paying two hundred and ninety thousand out of the general fund toward that debt. And then you can see there, the water and sewer fund obligations, two hundred and five hundred thousand. But one point one million doesn't pay down this year, and no new debt. And we're getting there. So staffing at city hall here, I mentioned earlier, uh, no changes proposed, other than. Hope to bring the, our time, corporate enforcement officer full-time. And again, being a real assistant to city engineer, building and zoning departments. And really already functioning in that way. Police department, no changes proposed, we are currently fully staffed thankfully. And we do hope to hire a new community service officer for the summer season. In the public works department, no changes yet proposed, we are currently, as of this moment, fully staffed. And we are actively working to find seasonal part-time employees, we could have one for the season. Um, actually, well, we had one come back and then one new one, so we're excited about that. Fire department, there we're continuing with two inspectors. One is focused, uh, probably more on residential housing inspections. So he, let's call him Schmidt, he did two hundred and seventy-five of those units this year, which is every unit. Did them all in one year. And then also working on miscellaneous fire inspections, lodging inspections. The other ones, red temp, so they are hoping now to get more into the commercial district, doing regular inspections of the commercial spaces. And again, they also participate, this Carl does, in the lodging inspections, so we'll have. Everything we're complete, inspection of all of our lodging companies. Vacation rentals, small ends, and more of this. Morning compensation. Small things are probably the most complicated. Thirty full-time employees, but we have four groups of people, then that broken down into the police union, the public works union. The non-union of salary and power league. So you can see a number of employees in each unit there. Uh, and they're all treated a little bit differently in this proposed budget. As you know, we're in negotiations with the police department right now, their contract, which expires at the end of this month. With a five percent pay increase, it's just kind of a placeholder in the budget to make sure we were pushing some funds in there. Um, but we're uncertain where that's going to come out. Current contract, we do have longevity. Allocation one percent every fifty years, that's one percent additional. Add to their salary. In the public works department, there, this will be their final year of their four-year contract, from the year we're going into here. They are scheduled for a one percent increase in the proposed budget, again, this is kind of a voluntary. Probably a voluntary payment here, but it'll be a three and a half percent of cost of living stipend, taking into. Uh, account, that cost of living.
Yes.
So that's a one-time stipend. Not added to their base, and they have the same longevity rule that the police department has. Non-union salary, looking there at three and a half percent, just basic increase with the one percent cost of living. The longevity stipend there, it is actually stipend, it's just one percent every five-year um, threshold they meet, it's one percent. Not added to the base, but paid out correctly. And then with the non-union hourly employees, they're looking at a dollar twenty-five per hour, which relates to between four and a half. The foot with seven percent, six point one percent, better than the employee. With the three and a half percent cost of living stipend, and same longevity rule as the non-union salary. So total cost of all that, uh, including probably that part-time employees full-time, would be ninety-one thousand five hundred and five. Again, that's obviously more this year. Transitioning that part-time to full-time. We'll also say, it's not listed on there, but we are looking at having a complete also. For um, the engineering department, to try to assist with the lead service line projects where. Cities are required to create a GIS based map, that's available on our website. Shows the progress we're making on our lead service line replacements. So we have identified an intern that has great expertise in GIS and. Just finishing up negotiating with them, and getting them in here in the summer, and help us out with that and some other projects. And uh, this is the list of kind of uh. Almost quasi-government organizations that we've worked with, split them during the year. There are no changes in the amounts here for any of these groups, but Historical Society, Conus Club, Jimmer Cothers, A R C. Help's Club, and the uh, North of Silver Economic Development, which most of us knows to see uh, coordinate. Form a name. So again, no, no changes to any of those in my options here. So that's everything I have to present. We certainly could talk about anything you want to talk about, any questions? Maybe before we do that, let's jump ahead though, just show what's to come yet. So at this next meeting, next Monday, City Council meeting, regular meeting, we'll have the public here on the budget. And then there'll be an opportunity to discuss the budget. We'll have a club session to discuss compensation issues if council chooses. So technically you could take action at the April eighth meeting on the budget, but. I wouldn't expect that. Could have another work session, that would be on April fifteenth, two weeks from today, if needed. And then April twenty-second is really when we're going to get the budget crew to make sure we're kept in place before the change occurs for the year on May one.
When do we have to decide if we're using the April fifteenth second work session?
Uh, we could, like, April eighth, you could, next Monday. We really need forty-eight hours notice, notices are minimal, but be nice to know.
And you know, we probably should, let the public here come first and.
Right, right, and also because some of our members weren't here, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully with, um, live streaming, those speakers will be able to watch.
Any questions of this? I noticed a lot of information here. We've had it for maybe a week or ten days and, um. You helped explain a lot of things, I think, to everybody here that read it. Um, thank the staff and you and everybody that partied in the budget. So. Anything from market this time? You aren't discussing, talking about any jury, you're looking like you're ready to.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Would twenty-five thousand be enough to cover the cameras that you're proposing?
Yeah, it should be. I actually, um, obtained a quote without with. Same preparation, J C E co-op. On Phil Carroll, see, we've already looked at it all and they quoted it. And the rough audit, audit, rec park.
What's the difference, you think, for gas, much between metal roofs and, uh?
Council.
Shingles to make them last, possibly last longer than the shingles.
Yeah.
And they would look a lot nicer too, I think.
Yeah, we can study that. We haven't looked at that.
Yeah, and then, then the meter upgrades. I think that's very important that we do as many as we can. We talk about losing water all the time. And I, these meters are twenty years old and I think that's. Think that's something that's very important. That's probably why we're having the loss because of the, the old meters. And we would only know if we put new ones in, but.
Yeah.
Um. And where would, I don't know, I just think twenty thousand is kind of low for those.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right. I think the reality is we're at that point where we are going to begin to do wholesale placement. And that's going to take some time to work that project up. There are a lot of options between meters, fires and technologies to look at. So it's going to take some time to study that.
One other thing. On the bathrooms down there, what's the limit we're going to put on those to, uh? Um, for the final cost?
Well, right now it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Plus the two hundred thousand, alright.
Well, yeah, the two hundred, that's spent, purchased property.
So we're just going to go unlimited of what it's going to be?
That's going to be council decision, right? We are in an oriented design process and. We still are on schedule to have continuity people. We just tried to, uh, kind of follow that concept that was presented with the council in terms of the. You know, the general layout, interior, the number of units and kind of stalls and pictures. But we'll see, I mean, it's, it isn't unknown right now.
Because I think the hardest thing is going to be if we do all, is finding people to clean them.
It will be challenging.
Even though it's somewhere around nine thousand a year. You know, they said about parking. Will that make over nine thousand a year, the parking with the fifteen spaces they have down there or whatever it is?
It should, I mean. Like our commerce street lot is typically around a thousand dollars a year for space of revenue. I think once the rest of you are there, that lot will perform better. It hasn't been, was, was good yet. But I'm not sure anybody's discovered yet or understands that it is a public lot. But yeah, and there will be part of the project that proposes is going to be to. Make some modifications in the parking lot, so it's striking, including the back canopy of that building.
Need more parking spaces?
Space, yes, we're going from fourteen to seventeen spaces, so. That should have a revenue positive revenue.
And, um, you are proposing possible, uh, solar panel and geothermal. You think that would like, um, do something to offset some of the costs of the buildings?
Yeah.
You know, utility costs, like stuff like that.
Definitely. Yeah, there's, uh, I mean, it's still too early to know, but we think there's potential for a. Basically a rebate on the geothermal system, so it may be. You know, even more cost effective than the new force there.
Right, yeah, right. Is there still some ways to get some? Possible money from clean and country, you know, like it's such a big number for the. They, that, that ninety-two percent that's, that's going to that and this is a service that is. That is serving the same community. I would love, I would, I don't know how it works exactly, but I would love to see how they could contribute. More to that, to that building because they're getting such a huge chunk of money. From our, from that hotel tax and this is going to benefit, I mean, that's, that's the main population. That it benefits and it benefits, you know, their experience, tourist experience of Main Street is having public restaurants. You know, that's a, that's a direct correlation. So I would love to, I would love to still explore how. They could contribute.
Right.
Well, you can always ask them.
When, when Rose was there.
It might have been different.
She, she was always looking out for things. Remember, she's got to look out for the county too. Because the county gives a lot more money than we do and, uh.
Um, do they?
They get more.
The county collects more tax?
I don't know about.
I don't know a lot.
But they make something, they make more, but.
Yeah, but I, yeah, but.
You know, they got the territory, they got Chestnut Mountain. And all that.
Do you still attend any of the meetings there?
They got a new guy there and I don't even think he comes here for me as.
He has. So I don't know, we, we need to do better to be creative. Liaison, liaison a little bit.
There you go.
Careful, careful what you ask for. Is that what that was? Yeah.
Well.
Are you, are you bowing out to?
Well, it's like I said, we can always ask them in our liaison. You know, I, I, I know it's in their bylaws, but Norris is just a representative from the city. I hate to put anybody from this table on, on any committees because I feel that you can come to items when it comes for all of us. I feel that sometimes people get painted by being on that committee.
Oh, sure.
And they don't think of the big picture, you know?
Right.
Maybe they don't, you know what I'm saying, right? Just, I feel it takes a lot of pressure, puts a lot of pressure on the individual that's part of it. Anyway, uh, you know, we're still working on our representative here that we can. Talker, talker me to.
And on the four oh three building. Uh, we have shared the plans for the remodel with the country tourism, they're reviewing now. Basically, we've given out all the dimensions of the space that'll be available for them to work with for visitor services. And they're asking them what they want to do there. And hopefully they will apply to that portion of it. And we can ask them to do more. We have, uh, I did ask them about electric, electric vehicle charging to participate in that. And as of today, they just let me know that they're not going to do that, that they are working with. Other than we had suggested they work with lodging properties to try and help those properties. And charging stations and they are.
Okay.
Looking on that. So.
Well, it doesn't seem.
That's why I have to report.
Yeah, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me to ask for some portion of, I don't know whether it's the, the, um. The construction of the restrooms or the, uh, maintenance of them because. As Cindy says, who's going to benefit from the tourists? I mean, I don't know, I might use it once a year, but I don't think, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, exactly. I agree with you.
Yeah.
Right. And where are we at with it? We're, are we two years, three years into a ten-year contract that gives them ninety-two percent of the hotel tax? Where are we at?
Probably three.
Three?
I'm not sure, I have to look at, you know, two or three. Yeah, we'll definitely be continuing that conversation about what they can contribute.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it directly benefits them. So as long as, you know, we, otherwise we're just. Providing this, we're, we're giving them the money and we're providing the service.
What provides a service for the tourism more than it does for the taxpayers.
Right, which I, I think is necessary, but then that could come out of the. How can we get that to come out of the tourist dollar bucket instead of bypassing that, right? And you're kind of saying that the citizens don't use Main Street, which is not fair.
I didn't say they can't use it. I said, you know. Be more for tourism than local taxpayer and people. That's what I said.
Yeah, oh, okay. Uh, so tonight we're going to still work with country.
Yeah, they do point out to me that, you know, we do receive the eight percent, which is. Sixty-some thousand and thereabouts. So there is revenue that they are giving us. So when we went into the agreement with, uh, it was originally physically, you know, whatever it was. We didn't mark any issue. We weren't asking for anything, it was only a percent to them. And they, they're country tourists and actually volunteer the. We were set. So we, we never asked anything about that. But we were, I should say, we, the city, really wanted to have that independent agency, you know, outside of government.
Because the county, they get eight percent too, don't they?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you for listening.
No, thank you.
Thank you all and thank the staff. Now, saying that, uh. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I have one motion in three seconds, so.
Take your pick.
Alright, take a look over there.
Stockton? Yes.
Penguin?
Yes.
Webfire?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Yes, most church, thank you all.
Go aisle.